Mayor Olinsky, I'm here. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. Does any council member have anything to report?
I do.
No?
I'm busy, but... Councilmember Allen and I attended Shop at the Cop, which was on Saturday, the ninth. It was really cool to see the kids and see them all run when Santa arrived. This was my first year being able to do it, so it was, it was really nice and just to show our support. Then on Sunday, December 10th, the Moose Lodge had their senior dinner, and I was a volunteer, so I volunteered in the kitchen, serving our seniors. They had to have had over a hundred seniors show up, and then the, the delivery meals. And it was really neat because the local Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts served the food, so it was neat to see our youth interacting with our senior, you know, population. And then the last thing I'd like to just remind people is, the annual Frosty and Chili Run is Monday, January 1st. This year, all proceeds are going to the Cottonwood Firefighters Association. So, we're starting and ending at American Legion Post 25. You don't have to be a motorcycle rider to attend and to support. We'd love to see people out there.
All right, any other council members? I'll just report briefly that the deputy city manager and Robert Winnicky and Rita Rodriguez, no, he's our deputy city manager, a couple other staff members who I can't think of right now, attended a Crestview Neighborhood Meeting. And just, they do it annually, they'd like us to come in and speak about the goings-on in Cottonwood, so it was really a great opportunity to connect with that homeowners association. And it's something I'd like to start to do this year, is to get a little more outreach into those neighborhoods so that council and all council will be invited to, to attend and get to know these different neighborhoods. It's just a great opportunity to get, get the word out and get the news out, and for them to ask questions in a very informal environment, so. Does the manager have anything to report?
Just a couple of items of interest, both for the council and the public. The library, in partnership with the Arizona Humanities, will present "The Era of Big Bands: Christmas Memories" on Thursday, December 21st, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., so if you're into big, big bands. And then, the U.S. Marine Corps Reserve will be distributing toys to children at the annual Toys for Tots Christmas Party this Friday, December 22nd, from 12:30 to 2:30 p.m. at the Cottonwood Recreation Center. And this is an event that, if you haven't been there, I mean, it is huge. Tons of toys, tons of kids, and we, our fire department and our recreation center staff really play a large part in this as well, but it's really a nice, a nice event for our kids that are less fortunate in the city.
Okay, nothing else, then we'll move on to presentations. We have two tonight, and the first is a certificate of recognition for City of Cottonwood's wastewater treatment plant from Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. I believe we have Sybil up with us tonight? Sybil Smith, come on up, thank you for being here.
Not a delianz. It was an easy drive down from the flagstaff, thank you for, thank you for this opportunity.
I think your sweater scared her a little bit.
Yeah, really scared the, scared the speaker, scared the community liaison, right? So, good evening, Mayor Olinsky, Vice Mayor Hageri, I hope I get that right, councilmembers Allen Althaus, Henry Norman, and Pfeiffer. On behalf of Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, it's my sincere pleasure to be here tonight to present a certificate of recognition to our, to the City of Cottonwood's wastewater treatment facility, and welcome you into ADEQ's voluntary environmental stewardship program, BESP. And I have, it's all over the website, but I also have a rack card that you can take a look at, at the bronze level. This is in recognition, is based on your commitment to comply with the state environmental regulations, with no environmental violations within the past three years. BESP was adopted by the Arizona State Legislature and signed into law 2012 to provide recognition and incentives for organizations to go above and beyond what is legally required to protect public health and the environment. ADEQ thanks your continued efforts to be a good environmental steward for your community. On behalf of ADEQ Director Isail Cabrera and myself, please accept this certificate of recognition.
Thank you.
So, council want to get a picture?
Would you like to go up for a picture with the...
Well, this would be a good night to do that.
In ADEQ's files?
Can we go back and change real quick?
Okay, one, two, three?
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Continued good work. You guys are setting some examples in this league. I'll say it right back. Jan the deer. Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda is a review of the 27, 2017 Historic Home and Building Tour Event. And seeing as how we'll be interviewing the vice chair later, I asked Mr. Matthews to present briefly on this tour this year. Thank you.
Thank you, I have the privilege to have been volunteered to give you this presentation. So, Michael Matthews, member of the Historic Preservation Commission. Recently, you guys got a good earful about what, what the council commission does, and how the home tour went. I think y'all have a copy of the survey, and we'll just kind of, we'll go and highlight that. Just wanted to go over again, this was a phenomenally successful tour this year. Fourth annual tour, this has been the best one. It continues to grow and be more successful every year. This year's attendance was 152 people paid and took the tour. Thirty-five percent increase over last year, very happy with that. Seventy-five percent of the people that took the tour returned to survey, so we're very happy with that also. We had 30 volunteers, to which without them, we couldn't have done this. Fantastic people, really good feedback from them, everybody had a great time. I highly recommend everybody looking to help them with that next year. We had eight properties on tour, four of them were hosted by their own owners, so we had great participation by homeowners, one of them being Catherine Turney. She hosted her own home, she's the newest commission member that we have on the Historic Preservation Commission. Happy to have her, she's going to be a phenomenal benefit. Revenues, $4,000, after expenses, we cleared almost $3,100 to go towards our 50/50 match program. I'll have to just point out, like I said, we had a lot of great people. I'd love to name them all, but you gave me five minutes. But without Glenda Farley, Felicia Coats, and Ryan Bigelow, this, this just wasn't going to happen. They were phenomenal in pulling together the history and the narrative on all these properties, and getting the, the property owners, which wasn't real easy. I think you mentioned wrangling cats at one time, so that, that was great. I'll just quickly go over, right here, the, some of the statistics. Most of the people that attended were from the Verde Valley. We did have some people that came from out of town and even out of state, which was phenomenal. Most people heard about it from the local newspaper, 46%. The demographics will tell you how that panned out, because 90% of the people that took the tour were over 55 years old. So, they still read the newspaper, that's good. If you look on there, "Did you visit Cottonwood today specifically for home tour?" 60% came here specifically for the home tour, which I think is just really great. I'm sure they had lunch, they had breakfast, they did other things, really good for the town. Eighty-six percent had never attended a previous tour, I think that's also very phenomenal. And 98% rated it good to excellent. So, it just couldn't have been better, couldn't have had better results. The quality was rated at 98%, good to excellent. Organization of the event, 97%, not sure we deserve that, but we'll take it. It was, it was done, it was very, very good. People thought we had a good number of homes, eight homes, I think, is the most that we'd want to do. The shuttle service, we had great drivers, and I think that worked out very well, and we thank those volunteers that did that, too. 91% said they'd be back next year. So, I, I think by all standards of measure, we just did a phenomenal job. We had a lot of participation, we had a lot of great volunteers, and we just appreciate them all. So, anybody got any questions or comments on the home tour?
Great job.
Thank you.
I have a question, I have a question just about the, the proceeds of the event. If you can go into a little more detail about where that money goes and about how much we've got so far for that fund?
We've got, I think, believe, we have $10,000, about $10,000 in, in there. And for properties in Cottonwood that get landmarked, and we have very few of them now, we're, we're trying to get the survey done so we can go through and we can landmark more properties. If you are landmarked, you are able to apply for a 50/50 grant for doing your exterior. If you do it and, and try to restore the exterior, try to make it look like it's original, we will match whatever you're going to do, 50%. And we want to try to get as many properties landmarked and then start encouraging these people to renovate their home and, and to work on the exterior and try to bring it back. And the walk around Old Town over here, it's just a phenomenal place. And it would just be great to start seeing people's, start restoring these homes, bring them back to look like they did when they were new. That's a, that's a great goal, and we're working on moving in that direction. Anybody else?
That's it?
I feel a little underdressed. Merry Christmas, everybody, thank you.
We have a sweater back there.
There's one left, yeah. Okay, next up is Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding their sweaters or an item that does not listed on the agenda for discussion. Anybody from the public like to address the council tonight? No? Okay.
Not the way we look.
We'll close the floor then and move on to approval of the minutes for the work session of November 14, 2017, and regular meeting of November 21, 2017.
I move to approve the minutes.
I'm second.
Okay, councilmember Althaus made the motion, Allen seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next, under unfinished business, we have two items. First up is interview of applicant for the Historic Preservation Commission. And again, so I chair the Historic Preservation Commission, just to give a little background here. And I was able to, this is a two-part process where the, all the applicants are scored on a blind matrix by a review committee, on which I serve as the chair of the commission, and councilmember Norman also serves on that committee. And then, the council then does a public interview of each applicant. And we did an interview of the two applicants a few meetings back, and now we're going to interview Mr. Vernas. They will also score that applicant off, based off their public interview, and then those two scores will then be tallied, and the decision on who receives the application will be made at a, at another council meeting. However, I and councilman must recuse ourselves from this interview process, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, council. Mayor Olinsky stole most of what I was going to tell you, but, as he mentioned, we already had two out of the three applicants interviewed for the two positions open with the Historic Preservation Commission. So, our remaining third applicant is here to interview with you this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Vernas, step right up. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm going to ask you the questions and give us your replies, okay?
Okay, I'll do my best.
I'm sure you will. Okay, the first question is, please tell us why you wish to serve on this order, commission, what is it?
Commission.
Commission, yes, I asked that question last time, how soon I forget. Serve on this commission?
Well, I have been serving on the commission for the past three years, and right now, I am the vice chairman of the commission, and I'd like to, well, to back up a little bit. When I first got on the commission, I was pretty quiet because I didn't really understand all the things that were going on. The commission had been in progress for about four years before I got there. And it's a learning process. There's a lot to learn from the commission, and it takes time to absorb that, and then get your thoughts and get on the train with the rest of the people who are more experienced in it. And I feel that I can keep the commission going with my experience and provide a good service for the City of Cottonwood.
Very good, thank you. Second question, what are your specific qualifications for this commission?
Okay, well, I have a master's degree in architecture from Tulane School of Architecture. I've been in the construction and architecture business for the past 43 years. I've had my own practice here in this town of Cottonwood for about 35 years. And I've had a lot of history, learning, you know, in the school of architecture. And I've done a lot, quite a few projects in Jerome, Cottonwood, and Parkdale that are historic projects, and I think I'm a shoe-in.
Very good, thank you. The third question is, what do you hope to accomplish during your appointment?
Boy, to make the town a better place. That's why I established my business here 35 years ago. And I just have a commitment to this area, to this town in particular, and that's what I'm looking forward to.
Thank you very much. And one last question, do you have any questions for the council?
Have a merry Christmas.
Appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Vernas. Let me say, our applicants this go-around have been excellent, all of them. It's, they're outstanding. So, the choice is going to be difficult. I think I've scored the tightest I've ever scored on anyone, just speaking for myself, so. But we appreciate all the people who came out and, and the job that you've been doing so far, and we'll go from there.
Okay, move on to the second item under unfinished business, that is adopting a city logo use policy.
Mr. Mayor, council, Hezekiah Allen with the Parks Recreation Department. Also with us is Jeff Cook with the Procurement Department. Him and I tag-team this policy. As you may recall, in a previous council meeting, staff presented this as a way to safeguard the investment and the brand that the city has worked so vigorously to build and develop. We were asked to make a couple of changes to the policy, and those include a term limit of five years, revocable use with authority at the city manager level. The applicants that have, shall have no unpaid debts or obligations, and that the policy may be amended in future if deemed necessary. In addition, we were asked so that bona fide local news stations or bona fide news organizations would be allowed to use the logo, which is, which has been added to the policy, in addition to publications promoting Cottonwood as a destination. Are there any questions?
I just have one question. I know number five, it says no person should use the city logo for purposes of supporting or opposing the nomination. We do have somebody in the public right now using our logo. Will somebody be contacting them to advise them they shouldn't be doing that?
I'd have to defer to the city manager and city attorney.
Yes.
Thank you.
I also have a question, and I don't exactly remember, so I'm sorry. How do we determine a bona fide newspaper or news agency?
I'll take that one. We kind of struggled with, with that. We, we wanted to, you know, create exceptions without having the exceptions swallow the, the rules we were trying to establish. It's a term we came up with, where we're trying to, we don't want to prohibit, say, the paper's going to run an article about the council, and, and they're going to use the logo with that article. We didn't want to prevent that, we didn't want to prevent local cable access TV from reproducing or displaying the logo. And it's just, it's the term we came up with, and hopefully, the other thing has mentioned is, we can revise this as we go forward and learn. If, if it's too, if that exception is, is too broad or too narrow, we can adjust it. But sort of what we came up with for now.
My concern is social media, and there's, you know, some social media pages out there that think they're local news.
I think we'll have to address that when we, when we come up to it. I, we hear you.
Okay. Has, I think we asked, too, did other towns have a similar use policy with their logo?
Yes, councilmember Althaus, that is correct. When staff put together this policy, we looked at multiple agencies across the nation and even some in Canada, so we did not reinvent the wheel here.
All right, any other questions from, from council on this? Okay. Any questions from the public on this item? No, okay. And do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, I move to approve the amended logo use policy.
Second.
Okay, councilmember Allen made the motion, councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion's approved, thank you. Okay, we move on now to the consent agenda. And this, the following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council, and they'll be approved by one motion. We just have one item on the consent agenda tonight, that's a change order for Southwestern Environmental Services, Inc., for additional design services related to the Mingus Avenue Project, 8th to Main. Would council like to have this item pooled? Anyone, member of the public like to have this item pooled? Okay, then I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent, consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so then, councilmember Norman made the motion, Pfeiffer seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right. Move on then to new business, and item one is resolution number 2922, appointing members to the Cottonwood Youth Commission.
Mr. Mayor, council, Hezekiah again with the Parks Recreation Department. It is my pleasure to announce Gunner and Sophia, they are members of the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission, or requesting to be reappointed as members of the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission. As you can, as you're aware, it can be intimidating for the young folks to come up here, well, anybody to come up here, so it's a great night to have them do this, especially. Sophia will be going over the members who would like to be reappointed, and Gunner will go over the members who are new applicants requesting to be appointed. We were one person shy of meeting our full commission this year, but the commission has since found someone, so we will be coming back to commission, to the council to, to fill that seat, so. Without further ado.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Gunner Tillmans, and thank you for having us. I'm the president of the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission. We are requesting action on resolution number 2922.
Thank you, mayor and council, for having us tonight. My name is Sophia, and I'm the secretary for the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission. And we, the commission and the staff respectfully request that the council reappoint the 2016 and 2017 Youth Commission members, Gunner Tillmans, myself, Sophia Rocha, Noemi Cervantes, Ruben Coyancy, Hannah Devore, Dallin Gordon, and John Valentine, to another one-year term.
In addition, the commission is requesting to extend Kirsten Hastings to another term as community representative. And the commission is requesting to seat new applicants that we will be bringing up one at a time. So, we'll first have up Jamie Chenwith.
Hello.
Thank you, council, for having me. I am a new applicant to the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission. I would like to join the commission in order to help the community and reach out to our youth.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Well, now we're having Anderson Jones.
Hello, I'm Anston, thank you for having me here, and I would, I'd like to be in this youth commission to help and get more youth out there to have, and not be in home.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Anderson. And I'll be having Jahia Rogers.
Hello, my name is Jahia Rogers. And I'd like to thank you for having me here today. I would like to further the community through this organization and help youth in the area surrounding it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jahia. We'll be now having Brigham Peterson.
Hi, thank you, city councilman Mayor Olinsky. I would like to be on the commission because I'm very serviet, servant, service-oriented, and I have previous experiences with leadership, and I really think I could improve the city and help make a better community and make you enjoy living in the City of Cottonwood a lot more, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brigham. Riley Bliss.
Hi, hi, I'm Riley, I'd like to join CYAC because I enjoy serving, thank you.
And those are the new commissioners that we are requesting for the 2017, 2018 year.
Very good.
I would also like to say some words, I feel that is fair. Anyway, four years ago, I applied for the, was appointed to the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission as an alternate. In that time, I told you that I was here to serve this community. And in that time, I'm here to tell you that I'm serving my community. And I've loved every minute of it, and this will be my last year on the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission. And so, glad to see new faces, so anyway, thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Merry Christmas to you.
All right, any, any questions from council? I, I would just like to give a round of applause to all the applicants and those required. Now, it's, it's really been a pleasure seeing what the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission is capable of. I was on the council, many were here tonight, were on the council when, when you were first formed, and it's just great to see you thrive and really do excellent work on behalf of Cottonwood, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve resolution number 2922, appointing members to the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission.
Second.
Okay. We had a motion from Councilmember Henry, and seconded by the Vice Mayor Haderge. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then Deputy Clerk, please read resolution number 2922.
Resolution number 2922, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing youth commission members and establishing their terms of office. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And council, if it's all right with you, I'd like to move up items five and six next for the outdoor lighting code. That be agreeable?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So item five is resolution number 2923, declaring section 408, outdoor lighting code of the city zoning ordinance as a public record.
Mayor and councilmembers, this is Baron Nejad, Community Development Manager, and I'm here for the dark skies ordinance. It is section 408, outdoor lighting code. And with the direction of the city council, staff has been working to be designated for dark skies, and the direction, under the direction of IDA, International Dark Skies Association. And we have to meet several criteria to be designated, one of them is to pass the ordinance in their requirements. We've been already practicing dark skies with our ordinance, so it wasn't much changes. But, again, with their direction, we made some changes, including some new definitions, lowering some lumens from 2,500 to 1,500, including non-conforming uses, and also municipality-owned buildings. And with this ordinance change, we will be one step closer to application. Again, we have to pass through several criteria. We are close to those. As soon as this is approved, we will turn in our application to IDA, and after that, we'll wait for the designated, community designation.
Great. Very good. Any questions from council on this?
I had a question from, multiple questions from some community members, and just looking for some information about the impact of the designation on tourism. Do you have any feedback on how this designation has impacted our neighboring communities?
Actually, again, with IDA's website, there is one, an ida.org, you can find several information on that one, but affecting the tourism, it is definitely for positive. There are some destination tourism counts because of the dark skies community, and, again, there's tons of information on that site, but definitely it is positive effect for the community.
And just, kind of, along that same line, I had another question about how does the dark sky designation complement our entertainment district? If we're having the businesses that are open, lights are off at 10, signs are off at 10, how do those two complement each other?
Actually, dark skies doesn't mean you shut down the lights. It is just certain rules, and shielded down, it doesn't reflect, and, again, the lumens are calculated differently, especially with the new technology, the light bulbs are created differently right now. So that doesn't mean we are going to be a dark sky, I mean, dark community. It is just, lights are shielded down, and maybe before baseball, let's say, baseball field was on, lights were on all night long. Now we will be more aware of that, that we'll make sure that lights are turned off to certain, you know, turned off certain time. With this ordinance, again, we are given 10 years to be complied, so that's enough time. So any chance we get, we should be updating those, maybe to automatic lighting system for public uses, or, again, instead of leaving those lights all night, then it should be automatically turned off, or just be aware of that, maybe staff will go and turn it off. But that doesn't mean the entertainment center or downtown area will be dark.
Well, I'm just trying to determine already how to shield my firm's sign, how we're going to address that. It looks like from this draft policy, we'll just end up turning it off at 10, because we're not open past, you know, we're closed at 5:30, but I just don't know if there's a cost-effective manner in which to comply with this policy, except for just turning it off, which I think is disappointing, because I really like that sign when it's working fully.
Well, it says 10 to some areas 11 p.m. I don't know if there's a need after that, but, again, we have, so I'm learning this as we go along, but there's a calculation, a system, that we don't know if it's going to, let's say, in your case, it's going to exceed that total lumen calculations or not.
It does.
Okay. So, so these are, and I might not be able to answer that particular case, but, again, after 11 o'clock, certain things can be turned off, maybe.
You bring up an interesting point, in that, in the entertainment district, where we're trying to create sort of this vitality that extends beyond 5 o'clock, that's an interesting point that I hadn't considered, and if we would grant an exception for that, because there's definitely more activity late into the evening, where I think the expectation is that the area will be well-lit, and, you know, pleasing.
Are there residents, though, that are nearby this sign, or these signs downtown that, you know, might appreciate the lights being turned off? I know if I lived across the street, I wouldn't want a light on, you know, shining in my bedroom when I'm trying to sleep, so, you know. We have both down here in Old Town, we have the entertainment district, but we also have a lot of residents as well.
Right. Yeah, it's a discussion, you know, to have, I think.
The, a second point that was raised by a community member was, what does the dark sky, what impact does this designation, or just a darker community in general, have on crime in our neighboring communities that already have the designation? I don't have any, you know, I try to look for some statistics, but it seems pretty clear from the internet that light does deter crime. So do you have any additional information, or maybe I should just look at this ida.org for information on crime?
This is where I'd get, yes. But at the same time, yeah, that site is very informational, actually, and also, we are not trying to cut down the services for police department, or increase the crime or anything. It is just, where it is needed, we have a section, it says, when, with the city manager's determination, we can add lights to those areas. And I would like to, I don't know how much I'm answering your questions, but these are something we are finding out as we go along. One other thing I would like to add is, just recently, Camp Burdi, not, it's just weeks ago, they approved there, so we are, we are just following after Flagstaff, Sedona, Camp Burdi, and so we are not creating new ordinance, it's already practiced in the area. So, again, with IDA's direction, so our numbers are not often in other community. Thank you.
I had a question about how many of, how many of the lights that the city has out there right now are non-compliant? Do we have any idea? How many of the lights the city currently has, for example, lighting our parking lots or along our streets are non-compliant?
We have several. Again, it's not going to happen overnight, so that 10 years is plenty of time. Eventually, when time comes, and when there's money, we will change that, but at least we have the direction and guidance with this ordinance, what to do.
Okay. Council, what are your thoughts on this proposal?
I still think it's good as it's written, as we say that we can go back and make alterations, and we've waived resolutions, or, excuse me, ordinances in the past, is in reference to what councilmember Toska's, or Henry, sorry, talking about. So that's something that we can address as we go. I think the dark sky ordinance is, the purpose of it is to make sure that we can see the sky, we can see our stars, we can not interrupt the natural cycle of wildlife, that kind of thing. And I think it's appropriate to have it, and I think as these issues come up, we can address them, because it's not, we're not reinventing the wheel. We do have other communities that have this, and it's just something that we learn as we go.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know if this addresses Ms. Henry's concern or not, but I think what you were talking about, and a lot of the illumination in Old Town is class one. Under this ordinance, it's for advertising, or it's not just to illuminate a bush, or a flagpole, or a monument, or something, but it's a, it's a display-type sign, and section G6 says that class one lighting should be turned off at 10 p.m., or as, or whenever the area's not in active use. So if we're talking about an entertainment district, and businesses are open later, I think that falls within the exception.
My concern is the neighboring businesses that may close early, and may have signs that don't meet that requirement, but, you know, as long as there's a mechanism for a business to come back and, you know, obtain some kind of waiver, I don't know what, we'd even name that a variance in our planning and zoning application of this, then that might address some individual concerns.
Yeah, it's hard to, I don't, I can't sense what the difference in lumens is. I don't, you know, I'm not a luminologist, so I just don't know what that, that looks like. It's tough. But if there, you know, are exceptions, I see that now, that G6 in here seems to, for as long as the area's in active use, I guess that does, that would be an exception within Arts, Culture, and Entertainment District, or Commercial Historic District.
If that business is open?
Well, but active use could also be, I would read that to be folks walking down the sidewalk, and, I mean, that, because that really is a beacon, it draws people to Old Town, it's becoming a landmark, in fact, it should be landmarked.
There you go.
I think that that, its use is not just advertise a law firm, it goes beyond that. It's a welcome sign.
And if that's the position the city's going to take, then I'm fine with that. I think it's a little bit open to interpretation, but that's fine, hey, we're on the record, so, right? That's right. Our city attorney's saying what record? She's not under oath.
Our city attorney's looking at our, at our variance section, and if this is a real concern at council, I'd prefer to see us fix it and bring it back to you. And because the variance tracks the statutory variance process, variances under state zoning law are very narrow, and you have to have hardship, you have to have certain physiographic or geographic differences between a property-seeking variance and other properties in the zone. I think if the council wants to see that loosened up a bit, and be able to grant a variance in other kinds of cases, we should probably write that into the ordinance.
I just feel like I don't want to get caught in a bind with unintended consequences of an ordinance like this, where, you know, we wind up diminishing the attractiveness of our, of the areas where we're trying to draw people to boost our economy. I mean, I'm comfortable enough with the language that's in here right now, but if the attorney is saying that's maybe not strong enough, or...
Well, there's the reading that I mentioned first time I interrupted, and then, then there's this, but there's also, as Baron noted, the, we have, all, all businesses have 10 years to come into compliance. I guess the shutting off, that, that might not, I don't think that's going to last for, I don't think we wait 10 years to enforce that. So I'm, I'm thinking, it's better to fix it when we see that there's something that needs fixing, rather than have you adopt it and then be back asking me to fix it because there's a problem right away.
Is it just the one sign in Cottonwood that we're talking about, or?
No, I could see it actually applying, because I don't have a sense of what lumens are, so I don't know if it would also be the Pepe's sign, or some of the other signs that we have across town that would suddenly fall out of compliance based off this ordinance. However, they, you know, they, they're in a, they're in a district that, that we're trying to keep illuminated to draw people to, and I don't, I don't know if they're far out of compliance, or if they're grandfathered in, and they're not so bad, or what.
Actually, we just purchased an instrument that we can measure it, so we have to do that as a part of the requirement once a year, in certain areas. My question is, do you anticipate that business be open after 10, 11? Is that why we are trying to create this variance, or everybody's going to turn it off after 11 or 10?
No, my concern is if we're trying to have, we're trying to draw people down, you know, I was just looking at the Chamber of Commerce marketing, I think it's stay, shop, sit, play, I mean, we're trying to draw a certain market to a certain type of crowd, to stay here and stay here later, and I think it's confusing, the comments I got from the public was, if we're driving to get to whichever businesses stay open later, and it's dark, and the sidewalks are just completely rolled up getting there, how are we promoting an entertainment district?
First of all, street lights will not be off. They are shielded, they are dark sky compliant, and they are still providing light.
No, all the businesses. If it's dark, like, for example, even in Old Town, if I'm working late, looking up and down the street, it's dark here for people walking up and down. It doesn't look, it doesn't say, hey, stay and play, stay and spend some money here. Well, now it does.
Yeah.
But, that's just, some, those are just some of the questions I had from some community members, and I, right now, I tend to, to agree with what, what they're saying. It seems confusing. How do we say entertainment district? Fun, and then, you know, dark sky, let's, let's turn out the business lights.
I think I, just to get the sense that in general, I don't think we have a clear understanding of, how many are non-compliant right now, and what, what would it look like if we held to the strict letter of this ordinance? I mean, that's, that's a question I have anyway, I don't know if the rest of the council feels the same way, but, I mean, I think we all agree with the intention, you know, and the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish here, but how does it, if it were strictly applied, would it negatively impact our, our entertainment corridors?
Mayor, councilmembers, we can certainly, since we have the instrument now, go out and get some samples, and, you know, take different signs that people are familiar with around town, and kind of come back and report to the council on how that would be impacted by this ordinance. If the council would like that, we'd certainly be willing to do that.
Is that something that council would like to see?
You can do that. Still to...
The mechanism needs to be put in place, I'm sorry.
Bringing it to compliance, you've still got that 10-year window.
Right. But I think, knowing that, maybe council would want to make an exception for those areas that we're using to try to draw tourism, which would be the Arts, Culture, and Entertainment District. We might want to loosen up this ordinance a little bit to apply to that area, but I don't, I don't know, I'm just suggesting that might be something we'd consider.
What, what about if we wrote something into the dark sky ordinance that said a business affected by this in the entertainment district? I mean, acknowledging that there's a mechanism for those businesses, so it seems as though we're complementing the two, or even for new businesses, because I'd like to, the entertainment district needs to grow, as far as the businesses that we have in it, and I'd like to support that, so, I don't know if just some verbiage change in that mechanism wouldn't address those issues.
Ma'am, would you care to stand, stand up and introduce yourself, and, but you have to speak into the mic, you have to come up to the podium, and thanks for coming out from Sedona tonight.
I'm Joanne Kendrick from Keep Sedona Beautiful, and I've been working with Baron on the dark sky designation that Cottonwood is pursuing. And one thing about the current lights, the current lights that are present today are grandfathered, which means they do not have to be changed. The city's lights, the goal of the city, and that needs to be in the ordinance, of which I think already is, that over a period of time, that those lights will be changed and will be dark sky compliant. But if you have a business that has a light, and if they're non-compliant, they are grandfathered, and they don't have to be changed. Now, in the spirit of dark skies, we wish as they, the lights go out, or they have to replace them, that they have the wattage, the lumens that suggest that, or amber lightings, or the lights that just shine down a little bit better than they are. We have lights in Sedona that are grandfathered, and they're not required to change. Although the city-owned buildings, that is a period of time... the city-owned buildings, that is a period of time, as Barron said, the goal is to eventually change those as you, as they, you know, burn out, or that you replace them, that they are non-compliant, that they become compliant. Because the city is passing a dark sky compliant outdoor lighting ordinance, and it would be in the best interest to show that the city supports that. But houses that are built before, that are built afterwards, have to be compliant with the dark sky ordinance that is passed, if you pass that today. The current lights that are on, that are non-compliant, do not have to be changed, because they are , they were grandfathered in.
I, I think where the confusion comes in is where you have 10 years to change your lights. Is that specifically to city structures, or, my apologies?
I'm, I'm not familiar about the 10 years.
I'll, I'll speak to that if I might.
I think it's for the city.
In our draft, under Section M two, there, it is not a perpetual grandfathering. All, all lighting that doesn't comply, and this is a good time to draw that distinction between the off at 10, and the, the lighting that doesn't comply. So there's sort of the behavioral component of this, and shutting off, which I think comes into effect immediately. And then, under this draft of the ordinance, lighting itself, in terms of its, its lumen quantity or measure, would have 10 years to come into compliance, except that if there is a change during that 10-year period, the change can't continue the non-compliance. The change at that point has to come into compliance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I believe we have a couple options, either to change it now, to apply to Arts, Culture, and Entertainment District, or to change it to those that are grandfathered, you know, lighting that's grandfathered in, that doesn't conform, is allowed to continue. Does that sound like the two options that we had before us?
And does Barron want to reach out to IDA and see, because I think part of the project here is, is to become dark sky designated, and I don't know exactly what their rules for the designation around this, this stuff is.
Okay.
I certainly can reach out to them, but this is under their direction. I'm worried that any deviation from this is going to make us not qualified.
But it seems like Sedona has, has applied the non-conforming uses are grandfathered in, or not, non-conforming lighting is grandfathered in. So it seems like, and they're dark sky. They're part of the IDA Association, right?
I can definitely check with IDA.
Okay.
I'm glad.
Thank you.
Will that work, then? Did you, did you also want to direct that we exclude the, I guess you'll ask those questions, if we can exclude Arts, Culture, and Entertainment District?
Sure.
And come back?
Sure.
Okay.
Should we bring this, and this was the deputy clerk's idea, and he was right, should we, should we bring this back to a work session?
Yes, please.
Sure.
I think it needs discussion.
And we'll do the sampling as well, so...
That'd be great, so we get a sense.
You get an idea of, yeah, what is a 1,500 lumen.
Okay.
Oops, thank you.
Okay, then, should we go ahead and table items five and six, then?
Motion to table items five and six.
First reading.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. Vice Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Allen seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Kendrick, for coming out tonight. All right, then we'll move back then to item number two, which is ordinance number 630, amending Section 301 amendments or zone changes. F, council action, three of the city's zoning ordinance, first reading. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Good evening. Scott Ellis with the Community Development Department. Ordinance number 630 is an amendment to the Procedure Section for Amendments and Zone Changes. It's an ordinance that changes a provision in there, and if you remember, a few months back, council was playing with the idea of the problem with having to send stuff back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to make minor changes to any amendments or projects, or anything like that. Any stipulations, things like that, if it wasn't approved as it was recommended by the commission, it would have to go back to them to make those changes first. This was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, as it's supposed to be, back in September. They were, majority of them were opposed to it. There is a little bit of confusion between the motion that was made and one of the commissioners, and I'd like to clarify, it does say in here that it was unanimous that they opposed it. However, there was one commissioner who did make the motion to recommend approval. However, there was no second, and so the motion died, never went anywhere from that. So there was, in fact, one commissioner that did support this. Basically, the change is, right now, as I said, any changes would have to go back to Planning and Zoning Commission for approval, before they come to City Council for approval. That puts unnecessary delay on projects, amendments, things like that, especially if they're very minor. We've ran into that several times this year, in the last couple of years. Research has shown that every, every place we've researched within Arizona does not have a provision similar to ours. Basically, their councils can make whatever changes they desire, without having to go back to the Planning Commission. After speaking with Mr. Horton the other day, we decided it might be best to put a provision in there that allows council to go ahead and make changes if you desire, approve it as it was recommended, basically word for word by the commission, or at your discretion, send it back to the commission. So it wouldn't be required, but it would be an available option for the council to do so if they felt necessary.
Have a question, Mayor?
Please.
Did the commission give a reason for their reticence in allowing that to occur?
They felt that the current process was adequate, and they were afraid that any, some of their recommendations could just be completely wiped out if they didn't recommend something, or agree with something, and council saw it differently, completely on it, than whatever they say, or recommend, or don't recommend, could just be ignored as an, and as an advisory body to the council on projects and amendments.
I'm confused. Maybe it's because I'm a fairly new council member. I thought we already had that option. If the council wasn't pleased with what occurred, we have to send it back, or we can say, no, that's not how the public feels.
Currently, we have to send it back. If we want to make any changes, it needs to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Even, even minor changes, even, you know, one or two word changes, technically, the way the code's written now, have to go back to the commission before it can be approved.
I value the, the feedback from the commissioners, but I also have been concerned at the delay when things have to go back. And I do like this proposed wording that says the council may send them back, or exercising good judgment, we, you know, make the minor change. And I, I think that, I know I personally take into consideration what our commissioners' recommendations are, and again, I appreciate the volunteers that serve, but at some point, I think we have to move efficiently through the process.
Yeah, and, and as mentioned in your, in your report here, we have run into the situation where the public does not attend a commission meeting to voice their concerns, yet they will come to a council meeting to voice their concerns that just wasn't brought up at the commission meeting, and therefore, you know, that could lead to maybe putting another stipulation. I know we had a rezone a couple of years back with that exact situation. They showed up to the council meeting, council couldn't make the change without going back to the commission, however, they took the applicant's word to make that change, and everything worked out fine, but this would basically eliminate that step. And it was a change that the commission would not have had an issue with.
Mm-hmm. Right, and I don't, you know, I know that this has come up, not frequently, but from time to time, and it seems like the changes that council would like to make are minor, are very minor in nature. And just in the spirit of expediency, it would seem more convenient if the council could then take in that additional information received, even if it is new information that the commission hasn't received, due to the lack of attendance at one of their meetings, and go ahead and move that change, or make that change and move that development, or move that process along more quickly. But I agree, in no way to devalue the work of the, of the commission or the staff, which prepares everything and makes the recommendation, plus all the stipulations. It's not intended to devalue that, but really to be more efficient in the work that we do on behalf of the community. But are there any other comments from, from any councilmen? I know we have some commissioners here tonight. Vice Chair Williams is here, if you'd care to...
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one...
Sure.
...observation, and, and the council remembers this, and just to remind us, there was one case, I think it was last summer, where we had an applicant from Minnesota. Imagine if you wanted to make a minor change, the code says it has to go back to the commission, somebody may have to take another trip from far away. And we do have developers from out of state. But we did, as Scott said, we did add that ability explicit, because it was always inherent of the council, to say, we're not going to make this change without getting, because it's substantive, it's important, we want the commission's feedback on it, we're going to send it back. We're just giving the council, we're taking the handcuffs off in cases where the council decides that's not necessary.
Okay.
And real quick, just, just to further what he said, that was another example of the commission not having an issue with needing that change that council could have made if the wording was different.
Got it. Vice Chairman Williams, thanks for being here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. The concerns of the commission, the majority of the commission, I think we're, as we explained, we're, we hold our meetings, nobody shows up, we get very little input, and all of a sudden, well, our concern was, is, or members' concern was, that, you know, neighbors, other people would come in with some information that, you know, would have been very pertinent to our decision in recommendation. And, and we also, commissioners asked the staff to, well, how many exceptions have we really had? And the only one at that point we were talking about was the music district in Old Town that we had set up, and we were having some discussion of where the boundaries would be, and whatever, and you were, you were having a problem with that, and that sort of set this whole thing in motion. And, and we've had a couple other little issues, but it's never been, far from the commissioner's standpoint, a real issue where you've really had a problem, you know, to come up. So I think with the addition of the language where, you know, where the, the council would give consideration, if you had substantial testimony to come before you that was not presented to the commission, we would very much, I think, as a connect between the commission and the council, we would really like, and I know it would delay a project, but sometimes, you know, haste makes waste, and makes, you know, bad decisions. We would, we would maybe like to see that and give our input into that. And that, that's, I think that was really the main concern. And, and, and the idea that this hasn't been a real major problem, it may be in the future, it may come up more. On the other side of the coin, we said, well, you know, we're a recommending body, you're the, you're the legal body, you're the ones that make the decision, so you should have the, you know, the right to do that.
Right. And, you know, and I'll, and I'll take, you know, the blame for this. I, I think when this came up, I should have gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission and kind of explained where the council stood on this, and I think it, a lot of this probably comes down to, you know, miscommunication. Frankly, I think that, I think we can all agree that we want to provide the service of government more efficiently.
Right.
But I think it just comes down to, you know, how we, how we do that.
Well, we, you know, when the commission really tries their best, we're not there to erode blocks, but we do take our duties very seriously, as a recommending body, to sift through this information as best we can, to, to give you our recommendations, to help you along with your decision, because you've got to make the actual decision.
Right.
And we just, you know, we're not there to stymie or delay, but on some other hands, just minor things, I would agree. If two words need to be changed in the ordinance, it sort of seems, sort of ridiculous, that can't be done, so...
Right.
That's what our, that's where we were at the commission.
And historically, and I, I place great value on the commission. I served on the Planning and Zoning Commission, as you know, and I, I mean, we couldn't really do what we do up here without first going to you, and getting processed through staff and through your commission. But in the past, I know that when the council has made some major revisions, that we have, you know, just automatically kicked it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, for, for another review, when many changes have come up, and we do get inundated with members of the public, you know, we typically have. But again, for the smaller, minor amendments, I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be able to, you know, quickly just approve those here on this, with this body, and move that forward.
The fact that we have the option to kick it back to you, and all the councils I've sat on have kept you guys in high regard anyway...
Right.
They would automatically, if it was something that we knew that you were not aware of, I'm pretty sure any council would just kick it back to you, and just the minor stuff that would delay it. But I haven't seen a council yet that, that wouldn't, on a major...
Right, and I guess the language you're putting into it would help just emphasize that, and, and I would agree, and I would, I would hope so, and, you know, I think we work together well, and, and we have a common purpose to make the city a better place to go, be, and, and to thrive, so...
Yeah. I think this, this might speak too to an opportunity for better communication between, you know, the chair, or the vice chair, and the, and the mayor, too, as, you know, maybe facilitated through staff, as these projects move through, to make sure that we're all kind of communicating as, as a project goes through its different commissioners.
And we're getting more major projects. You know, we're on the cusp of really a, you know, a development boom in this, in this area, and we're going to see a lot more of this, and a lot of these decisions can be very important, they're going to really require more input from citizens and so forth, and we need to try to do a, you know, and hopefully, we can do a better job of communicating to the public that come to our Planning and Zoning Commission meetings as well, to, to express their, if they have concerns or questions, and, you know, so we get a full picture, and, so...
And a lot of that's human nature, too. I think, you know, oftentimes, it's the second reading of an ordinance where all of a sudden...
Yes.
Somebody wakes up.
Somebody wakes up. Oh, my goodness, yes.
Councilmember Allen?
And I, I think the council here, the majority is, is very well recognizes that we don't know everything, and if something comes before us that's questionable, I think you're going to get a lot of, okay, I'm not comfortable with this, and kick it back to you, just those very minor things.
Yeah. That's very reassuring, I think, to report back to the commission, that I think that's really our goal.
Okay.
I was, I was just going to add, and I think this is a, a great object lesson, and just for one example, let's say an applicant is before the commission, and, and they want a three-foot wall, and, and the commission decides, and I think there's a memory trace of, of this example, and, and the commission wants a four-foot wall, I think it's important for the commission to communicate its recommendation and findings for it, not just the recommendation, and then the council is fully informed by the time it and the applicant are in front of you, asking again for that, for that difference, and then the council can, can weigh that horse. But that may avoid you having to send it back, when the commission has heard that and made a decision one way.
Right.
Yes, communication is extremely important, and, and not just for our recommendation, but you know what's behind it, and...
Sure.
We need to get that, make sure it gets to you.
Okay. Okay.
Question?
Thank you for being here this evening. Do appreciate it. Okay, then, council, what are your thoughts then on this ordinance?
I, I like the proposed changes.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, very good. Well, this is the first reading, so there's no action tonight. And how will this then be explained then to the Planning and Zoning Commission? Will this be just like a staff update, that we've had our first reading, or?
Yeah, we can, the next meeting's not until later in January, so by the time we get there, the second reading will have taken place, so we can give it to them as an informational report and update.
Okay.
And let them know your feedback, you know, that you would send things back if deemed necessary, or large enough project, and, and things like that, so that they're not thinking that, well, they're just not going to ever hear anything again if the change is made.
Okay. It's on the 22nd, January 22nd, right?
Uh, yes.
Fourth, fourth Monday?
It'll be the fourth Monday, because it's a holiday, yes.
I think that might be important to communicate that before the second reading. I think what you said was that we would already have the second reading before that was communicated. We have an email set up, or, I, I think it's important whether that's you, the... We have an email set up or, I, I think it's important whether that's you, the mayor, or staff communicating that, so if they want to be here for the second reading.
Okay.
You know, I, that's how I personally feel.
No, I agree, 100%.
We, we did have a meeting last night and informed them about tonight.
Okay.
And welcomed them to join us, so.
Okay.
But we can definitely do that again, send out an email, let them know about the second reading, or even just let them know how you guys have responded towards it and if they have any comments or anything like that.
All right. Thank you. Okay, then we move on to, I, I'm sorry. Deputy Clerk, please read ordinance number 630 by Todd Lonely.
Ordinance number 630, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending section 301 amendments or zone changes, F Council Action 3 of the city's zoning ordinance. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, the next is ordinance number 633, amending section 405 G signs of the city's zoning ordinance, first reading.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, council. This is ordinance number 633, an amendment to section 405, signs regarding, sorry, regarding freestanding signs and the size of what's allowed and the height of what's allowed. The ordinance in 2008 for freestanding signs allowed a maximum of 40 square feet and a height of 15 feet. There was an amendment that same year to make that 20 feet and 60 square feet for arterial That's the future of Main Street? Hopefully not. Basically, signs are subject to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for design review approval, and we have had a lot of them with the more recent large projects, it's part of the requirement is the signs get approved. The 20-foot height is allowed on arterial streets, the larger square footage is allowed on arterial streets. One thing that we noticed that didn't make a lot of sense was shopping centers, regardless of where they are, were limited to 40 square feet, yet a standalone business on an arterial street could have 60 square foot signs. So we're going to reverse that with this amendment, allow shopping centers to have up to 60 square feet and the max for everybody else is 40, depending on where they are. The Planning and Zoning Commission has been really big proponents of having monument signs a little bit lower than 20 feet. They've been very successful at getting applicants to agree to come down 15 feet, 12 feet, 10 feet, everywhere in between. Other cities around us have, most of them have lower requirements than what we have. Clarkdale's 10 feet from the existing grade. Sedona, they had just recently updated their sign code, they're proposing eight feet tall. Yavapai County is 12 feet, 30 feet on freeways. Camp Verde is 20 feet and they allow, because they have the freeway running through there, anywhere from 20 to 50. Prescott is 12 feet in the general, commercial, and 16 in the industrial. Prescott Valley, again, they have a major highway there, so there's a little bit higher with 20 to 30 feet in the commercial highway, five to eight residential. Payson's anywhere from eight to 12 feet. Flagstaff is anywhere from six to 10 feet. The other thing we'd like to do is add a definition of a monument sign. That's something that the commission really pushes for versus a pole sign, freestanding sign, like, see a lot of monument signs. That's just a little bit more rundown of what you just saw without, this basically is the max size and there's very few notes on what else goes along with that. That's just a quick rundown of that same thing. These are some of the signs that are currently in Cottonwood. As you can see, you know, that's a very tall one, especially when it's up on a hillside like this, and then they get 20 feet also, that makes it extremely tall. The commission was successful in getting Walmart to reduce theirs, to tone it down a little bit, you can still see it. That's an older one, when the dealership was at this location off of Main Street. And just a variety of signs throughout town that go from monuments to freestanding pole signs, things like that. Again, the commission really pushed for this with staff's help to come to an agreement. We brought to them a couple different alternative heights, let them kind of choose what they would rather have, anywhere from 10 all the way, I think, or as low as eight, all the way up to about 15 feet, and the majority of them decided 10 feet would be sufficient for Cottonwood. And that's another tall one there. Any questions from the council? Questions? Please.
And just so I'm clear, this policy, unlike the dark sky designation, does grandfather in any existing signs and there's no phase out or?
No. What's there would be there. If they decided they wanted to replace your sign, then they would have to meet the current code. If they were just replacing the face of it and not the actual structure, it can stay. But if they were to replace the entire structure, that's when it has to come and meet the current code.
So what if the pole needed to be repaired? As long as it were a repair?
Right, if it's a repair, then it's, it's, but if it's a replacement, then they have to meet the current, current ordinance.
Thank you.
So an example of the Verde Valley Medical Center's sign there, is this, with this new ordinance applied, would that still be a complying sign?
I'm not sure what the height is on that. I believe that might be a little too high. We're looking at making it grade is where it's measured from.
Okay.
If there's anything, and we have an example on the bypass going just past the Food City area where the grade is a little bit lower, we'll allow them to go up a little bit further, but not to exceed a certain limit, just so they can get that sign up out of that, you know, couple-foot ditch or hole or whatever would be there.
Yeah, I saw that in your, it seemed like it was 10-foot from the curb, top curb up, but no more than 15-foot overall, which I thought was a little strange, because if, if it's significant grade, it could be more than five-foot depending on how far back that setback is.
It could be, but I think if, if that was the case, they would look at doing some sort of fill in there to get it brought up to that height, to make it visible.
Mayor, the commissioner would like to address.
Sure, please.
A couple of them, like Scott was saying, this, I've been on the commission for seven, eight years now, and we've had a number of projects, and if you look along the bypass highway, the bank buildings, the various buildings, and Galpin Ford, whatever, we've made a request when they come in, they've all voluntarily said, yeah, we'll, we'll work with you on it, that's fine, that sounds good. Galpa's an example where they're below grade and come up. What brought this to a head was when we had the applications come before us for Maverick, the new Maverick station and the new Circle K, and we made that similar request. And they both have 20-foot signs. And we looked at the statute and, for instance, on, on what was called arterial street, you could go 20 feet, but on other streets where main collector streets or main business streets, which are not designated by the ordinance as arterial streets, you could go 15. It was just jumbled, number one. And so we asked, we hadn't heard back from Circle K, but the Maverick representative came in, we said, why would you do this? And she said, well, because of the law, codes as we can.
Right.
And, and so we said, well, gee, maybe we ought to look at this. And that sort of triggered this to say, maybe we need to, you know, they're right, they worked hard, but they had a 20-foot sign, they ended up with a 15-foot sign, they did put it, make a nice monument sign out of it. And it's, as it is, it was actually recessed down in a couple of feet below grade, so probably it doesn't exceed 12, 13 feet.
Right.
At this point. This particular sign would probably be in compliance if it wasn't elevated up on that berm there. I don't know, we'd have to look at that, but.
Right.
The idea, and so we also wanted to simplify it, instead of having all these various sizes and differences between where you're at and where you're not at and the confusion that comes about. Besides, you know, if you're a single business operator, wherever you're at, you know, it's 40 square feet, and we look at these signs, that's, you know, four by 10, it's, it's quite an area. Shopping centers, look at the Safeway or Food City or Fry's, basically, they probably, within the 60 feet would be, be adequate and, and would cover that. But that was our thinking, to simplify it, to make it clear, and to have something codified that's basically what we've been trying to strive for, for the last, at least for eight years that I've been on there and even before.
Right. I think you guys have done a great job in getting those businesses to comply with the monument and making them very attractive.
Yeah, they've been all very cooperative, you know, you know, point to Walmart, you know, all these places, hung their nose at us and, and gone on, but they've been very cooperative and, and it's, it's worked out well, I think, in most cases.
Yeah.
I, we're also concerned about going too low too, because, you know, you go to complaints and, you know, you get Sedona Beautiful, but you go into Sedona, I go to West Sedona, I'm not all that familiar where some businesses are, and a lot of their signs, their, their freestanding signs, eight, six feet.
Right.
It's hard to see when you're driving along there, you know, and, and through West Sedona as too. So we didn't want to make it too low, but still, you know, make it so it would be easily observed by people going by.
Right. All right, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
I just want, no, you're, this is wonderful. I, I worked for Planning and Zoning many, many, many moons ago.
Yes.
And that was probably one of the biggest stressors from the public.
Yes.
Not this kind of jumbled and inconsistent. This is a long time coming and very much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? No? Yeah, I think that provides much-needed clarity and it's good. Again, this is a first reading.
Yes.
So I would have Deputy Clerk, please read ordinance number 633 by Todd Lonely.
Ordinance number 633, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending section 405 signs of the city's zoning ordinance. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, up next is ordinance number 634, amending section 301 amendments or zone changes, F Council Action 2, first reading.
Spare Najad, Community Development, again. This is housekeeping for the department, ordinance amendment, code amendment actually, due to changes on the statute for our section 301 F2. In May 2017, Governor approved House Bill 2116 for amendments to Arizona revised statute section 9-462.04 regarding the standards and the procedures for legal protest to a proposed change of zoning. The new legislation defines how property owners are determined to be eligible to file a written protest against a proposed zoning amendment. The calculation is made by determining if the owners of 20% or more of the property by the area and the number of the lots or the condominium units with the zoning area. And zoning area is defined also for this in the bill, and either 150 feet of the area for the zoning change subject property, including the rightways, or directly affected properties where the proposed amendment is. This bill also stipulates that if the city council holds a vote to override a written protest, the vote must be rounded to the nearest whole number without specifying that the rounding has to be upwards. Currently, we have this section in our code, it has to be three-fourth of the vote for the city council. So we've been rounding up to the nearest upward number, but this one is, can go down. So this is the biggest change. So, and as you see, the bolded areas are added, just to clarify this in our current ordinance.
All right.
Questions?
Questions for Baron? Okay, it's housekeeping, so gotta do it. First, any, no questions, right? Okay, first reading, so I just would move, or would ask Deputy Clerk to read it. Ordinance number 634 by Todd Lonely, please.
Ordinance number 634, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending section 301 amendments or zone changes, F Council Action 2 of the city's zoning ordinance. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Baron. And then next is item 7, request for proposals for airport tenant service provider at the Cottonwood Airport.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Gordon Scott with the Public Works Department. I was going to take my sweater off before coming up, but actually I feel more welcome with it. As you all know, the airport commercial standards was adopted and we are moving forward with it. In fact, it goes into effect tomorrow. We already have a permitted business on the Cottonwood Airport, and I've met with four different businesses. What we'll probably do to work with them, just to get them through the process, is allow them to move forward as long as we get their certificate of occupancy, I'm sorry, certificate of insurance, will allow them to continue the permitting process for the rest of the year. But now that that's in place, we would like to move forward with something we've been asked to do for quite a while, and that is try to get some more businesses up at the airport. We do have three facilities that are available for use, and so we wanted to bring this to you today to see if, how you wanted to move forward with this. Real quick, there is a correction, there's a mistake in your staff report. I said that the 10,000 gallon fuel tank is for rent, that is a mistake. We, we won't be renting that tank. Something that we may consider is sharing some of the fuel flow fees with a prospective FBO or mechanic, but we won't be renting out that tank. The three facilities that we have available are a aircraft hangar, it's a 40 by 60 mechanics hangar, it's actually designed and built to code to handle aircraft maintenance. Also, there's some office space in the terminal, and then there's the space underneath of what was known as the Skydive Building, the building itself still owned by a private entity. So if the city selects someone to get that, they'd have to go into separate negotiations with that owner. Right now, the intent is to advertise for proposals, let businesses bring us proposals, try to restrict them as little as possible, other than obviously the aviation uses. We would like to put a preference on a mechanic, because several of the tenants up there would like to see a mechanic come in. But the purpose of this RFP is to say, bring us proposals, come here and tell us how you'd like to do business at the airport.
Great. Great thoughts, council? I really appreciate you putting the strategic directives under which this falls, it's very helpful for us. Thank you. Questions or input?
If I could ask, it's a little, it's not, it's more common than not that we'd issue an RFP without bringing it to you, and, and we thought that, that this is one you might like to see. If you could give us some feedback as to whether that, that was a good idea, or you'd like to see more of these or fewer, that would be helpful.
I'll speak for myself, but I really appreciate it. It's really helpful for us to see, for the council to see, and just get an idea of what's going on out there, what kind of things we are doing to drive our economy. And I think I've long felt that the airport is one of those underutilized economic drivers, and it's just nice to see that we're taking it serious. And I, I appreciate that this is really broad, so we're not trying to limit them, you know, other than, you know, we prefer mechanic, but. them, you know, other than, you know, we prefer mechanic, but, um, it's broad enough to where there may be somebody out there that we, a business that we really hadn't thought of, that could really drive that airport.
Exactly.
And make it something different and I think it's great that, I think it's great that we're doing this, so.
And I think one of the reasons we wanted to bring it to you is this, this is going to be a unique RFP process, in fact, one of my first things is going to make sure I work with Steve to get this done legally, but one of the first things I'd like to do is invite prospective, they're not, they won't be applicants, but prospective businesses to the table and say, will you all meet each other, will you, as, we, we may end up with a mechanic, a skydiver, a, you know, somebody who sells pancakes, um, it could be any combination thereof, and I'm not sure quite legally how we're going to introduce them, but, uh, that, that's going to be quite, we're, we're going to have to get creative for someone to make, make money up there right now.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I know I joke about selling pancakes, but that could indeed be the, one of the best moneymakers, uh, right away, you know, until, well, they're building their mechanic clientele.
Yeah, so to, share, share with us then a little bit about the process, how it, you know, when, when, when do the RFPs do back in, who reviews them, who's the committee that screens through them and how's the selection made?
Do you want me to do that? So, a, a normal request for proposals, um, we're going to advertise that the city has these spaces available, it's going to be the same document, uh, maybe some minor changes before it goes out, but the same document is advertised in your staff report and we're going to invite everyone to the table, we've already gathered lists of emails from FBOs all over the state of Arizona, we're also going to get a few more from California and the Midwest, hoping that our, we're really going to advertise that average two inches of snow a year, we think that'll be real attractive to some people in the Midwest and the state tax rates will be real attractive to the California people, so we're hoping to get somebody here, um, so that, after we accept those proposals, in fact, I think it's a minimum of thirty days that has to be advertised for, is that correct?
We're not bound, but I think as a practical matter, that, that would be a good minimum.
And I, I may suggest, this is part of what I need to work with Stephen, I would may suggest, I'd like to see that maybe go a little bit further, because this is a, you know, some, someone's moving here, this is not someone who's, you know, already here in town and, so we, we may want, in fact, even go a little bit longer, because someone may need to do a substantial amount of research before just, hey, I'm going to throw a business proposal to move in from California, there's, not that they'd be moving in that thirty days, but.
Right.
Um, so we, we may indeed make it a little bit longer. Um, that committee will probably be made up of at least three staff, uh, two commission, airport commission members, and we usually like to invite in at least one member of the public, you know, perhaps even a, a non-airport personnel, um, it'd be really good, in fact, to get a business person who can kind of look at the proposals from a totally different point of view of, hey, are you, are you sustainable, are they going to be able to make that money?
Right.
One of the things we've thrown out there is the possibility of giving, uh, hangar rent for free for a year, up to a year, and or shared revenue or, or revenue-based rent, you know, basically a percentage of their gross or something. The idea being, get here, get started, we understand the, the first twelve months is probably going to be the toughest, so get started, um, obviously that's going to have to be negotiated within the proposals, but that may be a possibility.
Okay. Thoughts?
I, I think it's a wonderful idea to have it so broad, I really appreciate that. One of these days, you'll get a restaurant down in there and I think you'll really draw people, I know, using Sedona, they have a great little restaurant that people come to that aren't air people, that aren't plane people, but if you can, if you can get something in there, I know that's going to be a while, but to open it up that broadly, I think, I hope you're going to get something that you don't expect.
Right.
And I know a, a restaurant is one of the commission's top priorities, even though they, they recognize it's probably several years out, we're, we're actually one of the few airports in the state doesn't, doesn't have an all-airport restaurant, um, Eve, Payson, Williams, Prescott, uh, you mentioned Flagstaff and Sedona.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay.
Make a motion?
Please.
As soon as I find it. I move to approve the proposed RFP for an airport tenant slash service provider.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Allen made the motion, Al House seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It's approved, thank you for bringing it forward, appreciate it. All right, next is claims and adjustments.
Second.
Okay, or Vice Mayor Haudig made the motion and Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Move for adjourned?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.